They were working so much.
Yeah, yeah.
Angie, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, you've got your mics powered up. Great, ladies and gentlemen, the City of Winsboro Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of November 5th, 2019 is hereby called to order at, why that clock is wrong, 5:31. This clock is still out, is it? Do I say this time?
Sorry.
Okay, our agenda items will be then, approval of the minutes. Have all the members had the opportunity to read or review the minutes?
Yes.
So, a motion to approve or correction would be in order.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from September the 3rd, is that correct?
That is correct.
As listed. I make a second motion.
Move is seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. Next item of business is a request for zoning variance, Lot 2, Block Q1.3840, City of Winsboro, Winsboro, Texas, 214 Connie Mae. And, let's see, do we have the petitioner here?
Yes, it's Michael and Timothy Park.
Okay.
May I approach?
Please. Give your name and, I know you did already, but give your name and address for the record.
My name is Timothy Park and the address of the property that we own, that we wish to construct on is 214 Connie Mae. Michael lives at 401 North Mill Street. Okay, and so what we're requesting is three minor variances. A variance on specific use, Item 10.1, Item 6, museum, library, or art gallery. I plan on using this structure as a living facility, as well as a gallery and photo studio. We also ask for a variance on area regulations, Item 10.3. The structure we have planned to build is 1,200 square foot, 300 square foot shy of the 1,500 square foot minimum on city code for the SF2. The reason we are going for a 1,200 foot structure is to make it work statically within the property because it's a very odd shaped property. And then we ask for a variance on Item 10.4, construction materials. What we have in mind and what we plan to do is to build a metal structure with no veneer facade, but using wood grain metal, which we do have a sample of here by the way. It's not the color we're gonna build it in, but it resembles wood structure. And what we're going for is a kind of an industrial art deco look. I know you guys have been privy to the stuff I provided with the city engineer, not city engineer, but the city manager, Craig Lindman. And I've put together like a little three minute video if you want to see the plan. I don't know if y'all have seen the video. If you have, we don't have to sit through it again.
I've seen the video.
I have not seen that.
I think we probably go to let them take a look.
Alright, well, let's do that and then I'll shut my case off.
Thank you.
The structure we propose to build will be seated at the forward northeast corner of the 214 Connie Mae property plan. It is necessary for us to minimalize its footprint for it to work within the scope of our design. This lot is beautiful. It has gracious mature cutov trees that frame a natural and inviting drive at the entrance, which will be enhanced by the same architectural lights as shown here. And it has a historical WPA storm drainage canal running behind the woods. It is stunning as well, a part of American history and should be an effort of preservation by the city. Now, let's take a look at the community. The closest structure to our property is this structure immediately facing Broadway on Connie Mae. It is not exactly something a community would be proud of as visitors travel to our town. It is probably uninhabitable. And I often question ourselves as to why we would even want to build a respectable structure next to this. But I know and I'm proud that our structure will be an upgrade to the community. Let's take a look at the community around where we propose to build. These are the structures around our property. This home is in dire need of repair, the rock house with sawhorses on its dilapidated roof deck. And this structure recently condemned by the city is a substandard building, unsafe occupied. Also, this jewel of the structure. I'm hopeful you get my point. There is precedent of steel building facades being allowed in town, is this home. In addition to this home having a steel facade, there are two outbuildings as well with steel as the facade. There are many more structures of residents in Winsboro that are of steel structure and many more with steel ropes. Seen here is one of many residents Curtis Funk of Olympic Building Systems in Winsboro has constructed and will erect on our property. He has vast experience in building steel homes that are aesthetically pleasing. Anything we construct on this property, short of a shanty, will enhance the neighborhood immensely. And it will further the reputation of Winsboro being an artist's haven. In this past year, I've done pro bono work for Winsboro Schools and Winsboro Arts Council. You may have seen the headlines that Winsboro Arts Council is planning to build a new facility. My heart is in giving back to our community. This structure will help me further to provide more for our town. The variances we as a board are modest. And we respectfully ask that the planning and zoning board, as well as the city council, will seek that to approve our plan. Thank you, we appreciate your consideration. So, let me just add Reverend Duffy, Pastor Duffy has showed up here. And he kinda keeps his thumb on the community over there. And we visited with Ms. Starling and we visited, she's kind of the matriarch over there. And I have visited personally with other people within the community to express what I'm trying to do, what my brother and I are trying to do. And we've not heard any dissenting opinions on it, or it's like, nah, we don't like, they, I think the community's excited. I think it's gonna be a real improvement to the community.
Pastor, would you care to speak on my behalf?
Well, just a little bit, my word is short. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Starling and...
Just your name and address for the record, sir. How can we know?
Gregory Duffy, Winsboro, Texas. I am pastor at Faithful Ministries. And also, I'm a caretaker for Ernestine Starling and her son. And also, like you've been saying, I kinda, I kinda watched Connecticut a little bit over Connie Mae and the, um, we are, I saw the, uh, the rock building. I've been trying to repair that also. As we speak, also, you know, sometimes it's hard to get people to donate, but that's okay. That is going to be repaired on, I'm already working on that. And then also, the house that I saw Ernestine Starling, that need to be repaired, we're working on that also. Brother Timothy, he approached you already, is that already if I say brother?
You've got brothers. People are different now, yeah.
We are trying to communicate with who we can over at the park also, but he approached Ms. Starling and also his steward about what he was trying to do. And I told him, for me, it was okay, but I don't own the houses over there, they own the houses. But I do, I am, uh, the rock building is owned by Hype. And we are trying to work on it. We've spent probably somewhere around, probably as we speak, somewhere around 3,500 bucks already on it, trying to get it repaired on that part. But I don't see any problem, but I can't, the only thing I can say is, is for Timothy, uh, it's, it's okay by me, but as long as he meets the city requirements. And y'all know what that, you know, no specs, that's out of my hands. But if, that's okay, if he's neighborly, got no problem with it. Ms. Starling said she didn't have any problem with it, but she's, uh, well, she was, she was concerned about what was going on, so that's why I'm here.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Would anybody else in the audience like to comment, pro or con? Alright, Angie, the required notices were sent to all the neighbors that are, I'm seeing two head shaking. Okay. Any questions from the commission to the petitioners or anybody in the audience?
Uh, I do wanna, I guess, start out a couple of things. Your application cited that several other structures and locations are substandard structured with metal facades as a precedence for your variance request. I did want to ask, are you aware that the structures you reference do not represent precedence with this commission in terms of coming to a decision about what that is from that perspective?
Yes.
Substandard structures are basically irrelevant to that. I just wanted to make sure that point was clear.
Okay.
Let's see, I did see, I did notice two different positions in the structure. One on the video you provided and one on the information we received in our packet. What we received in our packet was parallel to the street in front and what I saw up here was an angle set back further on the property.
I, um, I think probably what you refer to is this perhaps?
Yes.
About that approach? And it's not to scale or anything, but it's really not parallel, well, semi-parallel the street.
Right.
We're gonna put it back in this corner, you know, following the easements and that sort of thing. So, um, I want, honestly, there's train tracks that go right here. So, I wanna put it back as far away from the train tracks as possible. So, we're gonna set it back about that corner. So, to your point, yes, there's, they vary, but this is not...
Thank you. Well, typically, most of them are done parallel to the adjacent street that they run out on, so that was part of my concern from that perspective, not knowing which way.
Would you prefer to have it that way?
I think it would be consistent to the current zoning, which is SF2, I believe in there. If it was, that would help, that would help hold it if it's not, if it's not creating a hardship of some sort.
I don't think it'll be a big deal.
The, I've got a few other questions.
Sure.
I might not, I added a lot of questions.
I've got a few, thank you.
Okay.
Send me when you're done. So, I don't need to go ahead with that.
Typically, on variances, we're looking at hardships. Are there any particular hardships on the three variances that you're looking at that created your need for those variances?
Yeah, I've been walking the path of Joe the past year or so. I, my employer, the past two decades, J.C. Penney, where I was senior video producer with the corporation, compelled me to take early retirement. It was basically, you either take early retirement or your position's gonna be eliminated. So, I don't know if that counts for anything. My son was near fatally shot a couple of years ago on an armed robbery attempt. And then my wife divorced me. And by the grace of my brother and his family, who's lived here since the early eighties, they have been, you know, taking care of me. And so, the hardship is, I need a place to rest my head. I gotta get out of his house or he's gonna kill me. So, uh, and what I wanted to do was start my life anew here. And I'm a layup priest minister in the Episcopal Church. I serve at St. Francis over on Blackjack every Sunday. And I, you know, I've been part of the ministry for a number of years. But I think, when I would serve in Dallas, it would be like a big church and, you know, these kind of fallen shadows. Here, I know I'm making a difference. And I know that I can go out and do the work that I do and provide for myself. I'm not gonna get rich like, you know, the money I was making in Dallas, but I don't care for that. I just wanna get by. And this community, the past year that I've been here, has been so warm and accepting and generous and helpful to me. I can imagine myself being at any other place. And I hope, I'm hopeful that I can set this up over there and be able to continue the work that I love to do. Now, what I've been doing the past year, I still have corporate clients over in Dallas. And I'll go down there and shoot, one of them, for example, is Motel 6, Tom Bode, he leaves the light on for me. But I'll go down there to do a shoot, they give me, they comp me a hotel room the night before. And then I shoot all day or for two days at the place where I'm staying, and then I bring it back up here and edit it. But I need a facility that where I can go in and do the edit work. And that's not gonna disturb anyone, you know, it's, what we're trying to do over there is just, you know, have a place for me to do my gallery work and my studio work.
So, basically, it was basically financial hardships, was a combination of basically why you're wanting these minimum requirements changed and some of the other things changed up there.
Correct. I wish to do this as economically as possible.
As possible, your bet, your bet. Well, I've heard lots of good things about you in the course of conversations over the thing.
Well, somebody's been lying to you.
The, do you have, do you have clientele traffic at your studio?
No.
If you're operating as a studio?
No, no, no. It wouldn't be typically unless I was doing like portraiture, somebody come in and had me take a photograph of them, that sort of thing, you know, family portraits, the anniversary portraits, that sort of thing. But as far as the editing and everything, they're all analysis. I just push it on the internet over there.
Okay. The only reason I ask there is because you're asking for a situation that does require some ADA, if we look at the global aspect of bringing a business into a home, some ADA requirements. In your case, it might not be anything but widening a door or something if you were to run into that. That was the only other...
Well, I was advised by Mr. Jim, what's Mr. Jim's last name?
Mr. Parker?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Jim, the old photographer here that's retired.
Dyson.
He's, he, Dyson, Jim Dyson. He's been advising me and mentoring me and helping me to get set up here. And he, he actually had made that suggestion, it's like, if you're gonna have people in and out here, you need to have ramps and you need to have handbars. So, you know, or whatever, so...
And widening the rest of the doors. That's really the only thing I was looking at, is I looked at your floor plan.
Oh, okay.
First thing that caught my eye in the corner of that was just, just that particular issue and undoubtedly the ramps and whatnot would be a necessity if you were to do that.
Sure.
And, looking at my notes here, the, the only other thing, and I, I don't have a problem with any of this so far. The only thing that probably sticks out, the two things, I guess, really is one, that structure and location. I would prefer to see it facing the street like the rest of the residents in there.
Okay.
And using the standard setbacks on front sides and whatnot that we normally have. Obviously, you go back, you've got room to go back off the street, that sort of thing. But making those minimum requirements, meeting those from that perspective. The, the only other thing I do have a question on, and I know it's a financial situation on all of these, and I don't have, I don't personally have a problem given these variances, but the one thing that I do have a problem with is the solid metal front from the front facing. If, if it would be possible, where you could come back in and put either a, and I know you're trying to keep an art deco look, I think there's a way to do it, it just depends on the material you use. But if we could put some sort of veneer on the front of that, maybe three foot tall at the max, you could save, using twelve foot panels or your steel coming down the front and three foot of that at the bottom. My calculating costs are somewhere in the neighborhood of 840 additional dollars for doing a three foot facade across the front of there that was either brick or stone, or whatever you liked. But because it's in a residential area, I, I don't like that solid metal front on the front of the building from that perspective. Outside of that alone and what you've already agreed to, I don't see a problem with it from that perspective, if that was something that you're willing to take a look at.
Certainly, Mr. Gradley. I've thought about that and I've thought actually, you know, the hardy board product, I thought about using that like the stucco stuff and put it across, so it'd just be like four by eight. So, I could put four by eight panels across the front and then finish it in the stucco finish.
That or possibly the siding and stuff of that nature. I'm not sure how that paneling would look going on the front.
Well...
Board, that's typically a sopic material, so that's...
No, okay, well...
I mean, unless you're talking about something different, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm talking about the hardy siding, the hardy...
The regular, eight inch siding that goes up in strips, going across horizontally.
Yeah.
I think that'd look fantastic.
Okay.
If we're talking about eight inch siding.
Okay. Now, that, we can do that.
Okay. That's...
Mr. Park?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
I need to talk to you about the square footage.
Yes.
I have built two houses on Connie Mae and not in the area where, where you are. When you talk about wanting to shrink down to 1,200 square feet, let me ask you a couple of questions.
Please.
Cause in your document to us, you say, quote, that you want to use this as a museum, you want to use this as an art place, et cetera, et cetera. A library, art gallery, this would be a domicile as well as a studio, as well as a gallery. 1,200 square feet's a little tight for all that, least in my observation.
Well...
With you having to live in that particular building. And two, the second part of my question is, what about parking for these people that come? What have you designed to do with that? Is that gonna be gravel? Is that gonna be concrete?
The first quote that you addressed...
Yes.
Was about art gallery that are, that is specific, that's not, that's a quote from my document, but I quoted the Winsboro Municipal Code for what is allowed on that property as far as an SF2. It's not gonna be a museum and all of this stuff, it's just gonna be a workspace and gallery. So, to your point, if, if I was trying to do everything that's listed within SF2, it would be rather cramped. But that's...
It certainly would.
But what I'm basically planning on it is a studio and gallery and a working space. And honestly, the work that I do typically, and you know, you're a former sports guy and news guy, everything I do, I edit on a computer. I can do that on anybody's house, I could do that here in City Hall.
So, I just wanna make this perfectly clear so that we understand.
Yes, sir.
And I certainly understand this document, where you said museum, library, or art gallery. What we're really doing is having a domicile for you. And within that domicile, there's gonna be a studio for you in which to work, is that not correct?
Correct, sir.
Is there gonna be any traffic coming there? People that are bringing you documentation that needs to be done or so on and so forth?
No, as I expressed to Mr. Gradley, most of the work I do is in Dallas and it's done electronically, so there's really not gonna be any traffic through there whatsoever.
So, what we're really looking at here is you building a 1,200 square foot domicile for yourself?
Yes, wood workspace for me to do my...
Then, let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
What are you going to do about driveways or approaches into the building?
Well, I'm either going to pave it or do gravel or do something with stone.
I understand, okay. Are you going, are you using a lipique here to build that building?
That's correct, Curtis Funk.
It'll have a cement floor?
Yeah, yeah, that's a slab, you know, with, you know, perimeter beam.
And you're gonna build it with one bedroom, one bath, one living room, one kitchen, et cetera?
Well, there's the drawing.
Ah, thank you. First, I'm up, see?
Oh, wow.
Let me, let me take a look here.
So, basically, it's gonna be open space other than a bedroom. And the reason that I wanna do that is so if I'm doing like, you know, product photography, that sort of thing, it's, it's, you know...
I've got you. Okay. I have to go back to Mr. Gradley's statement, I would really like to see something done in the front of it, be it with hardy board or something. I think that would really, really look good from what...
Sister, you did?
Yes, I hand drew that in, yeah. That was in front of his drawings. If I may show you this, just so you can see what we're looking at, cause it's a...
I just think it would be ideal, here, let me show you this.
Basically, it runs across the front.
And then what we would end up doing is wrapping the corners as well for one piece of that.
Twelve inches wide.
You would come here and then you took, you'd take the corner, only cause that would give it a little bit more softness and make sure that it looks like a residence.
Okay.
I think the big thing that, excuse me, Gary and I have talked about all of us here, I just don't want a metal building up there, it looks like a metal building.
Well, I can guarantee you that it's not gonna look, I mean, it, well, it's got the wood facade.
I, I understand all that.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure it happens.
Yes.
Thank you. Because I do build in that area and I have some lots in that area, which I'm across the street from here, over 11, but whatever we can do to enhance that area, I'm behind it 100%. And with you coming there cleaning up that house, I really, really, really appreciate that. But there's a certain look that we need to carry so that it invites more and more people there to that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem.
Doctor Raisner?
Fine.
Are you fine?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Alright, so the question on the floor then is, does the P and Z board recommend approval of this and refer to city council? Or does the P and Z board not approve?
Y'all prepared to make a fairly lengthy motion.
Oh, were you? Okay, well, you're ready, please.
If it, yes, we definitely, we need to give it to them.
As long as Angie's prepared to type a fairly lengthy motion.
I make a motion that we recommended to council based on the stipulations that the property will face in the street, as all residences do, and the data that was given to us in our packet, not the data that is on the video, and that it meets the standard setback requirements for that. All that being said, I, and in that stipulation also a three foot hardy siding.
Some sort of veneer.
Yes, on the front three foot section to wrap all the way across the front and come around one foot on each of the sides, from that perspective, to wrap it.
And that can be like the hardy or hardy...
Yes, well, preferably the siding where it's an eight inch siding material.
Okay, or stone veneer perhaps, or brick veneer?
Yeah, any of those are acceptable. I think brick would be a great upgrade, but there again, that's a budgetary thing and I don't wanna get into that with you, so, you know, we'll, hardy to brick, whatever you like. But if we can, if we can meet those stipulations, then my motion is that we move that to council with those stipulations.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the request for zoning variance with the conditions put forth by Mr. Gradley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries and will be recommended to city council, I have an extra meeting.
Mr. Parks, I wanna thank you personally. You have, in the year that I've been here, you're a little over a year that I've been here, you've made one of the most complete variance applications I've ever seen.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I thank y'all.
No, I thank you for that.
I look forward to seeing your business. I definitely wanna be around it and see a little bit of what you do because as a mild author, as a former journalist, I stand...
I must tell you that this community, thank you gentlemen so much, this community has been so heartwarming and welcoming to me in my time of need, that, you know, everywhere I turn around, you know, people are offering a hand and helping out, so...
Well, if you ever need a script cameraman or light man, give me a call.
Y'all give me all your cards, you know?
And if you need a good carpenter, did you see that?
Well, I do.
That piece, we'll probably give those drawings to the city so they know what we got and what we've done. That'll do it for you guys.
Talking about this, uh...
You want this attached to this?
No, that was for, for Dr. Raisner, so...
Here's how y'all get in touch with me, I'm a little shameless self-promotion.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Little background on the, if you wanna call me... If you want to call me, use the 214 number, not 972. You'll get my actual line.
You have the drawings.
I have all the drawings here. This is mine.
Oh, you get these.
Yes, sir. We got it? They're all there.
Okay. Last on the agenda is discussion, possible action, billboard moratorium and citywide sign order discussion and possible action. As you may recall, several months back, we asked the City Council to put in place a temporary moratorium. The erection of new billboards within city limits until we could draft a, a new ordinance regulating billboards. Now, I, last I have heard, we were handed out to our legal counsel?
Yes, it had been, it had been handed off to legal counsel and they gave some stipulations back on it, really not a lot from that perspective of what Craig and I had discussed. And of course, Craig did send the last packet out, four different city, different cities.
Examples of their own.
Examples of everyone's. I don't know if everybody had the opportunity to review those or not yet. That is something we need to take that to look at in depth and start moving forward to design that ordinance. And at this point in time, we need to move forward on item by item basis. And at this point, it would be billboards only and we need to make some decisions about those and move forward. Like, how many is enough in the city?
That's true.
Several, several different options like that. Have any of you had time to review any of those other city packets at all? Gary, I have none.
I did look at them this afternoon. I'm sorry, what was that? See something?
Said some of them are long. There's like a two-page one. That one sounds really good.
Yeah, well, it was mostly definitions.
I was really impressed with thirty-two page ones there. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot of data within those. And it's not like we had to pick one and say, hey, go, because that's not the intent. We need to build something that is directed towards this community, that implies all of these items. And maybe a mixture of everything that's in there. That being said, I would suggest that maybe we set up another meeting before our next meeting to kind of review these items, maybe a work session so that we've all had time to review them all. We come forward with our own questions because we, we have the ability to set the number of billboards allowed within city limits, which is something I think is crucial. We, we, I don't even know how many we currently have, so we need to have, take a look at that. Does City have reference to how many have been permitted anywhere?
Probably not.
Well, part, part of what we need to look at too, John, is how many individual units there are, how many facings. And how many facings are on each one of those units. We'll take a look at it from there, see what we've got sitting in the city with all sizes of billboards from that perspective. And then move forward as quickly as we can. We need to put size restrictions and distance regulations on them in matter of like distance from schools or churches or scenic areas. Of course, if we've got a limit or if we've met the limited number of billboards, we don't have to worry about all of those details as much as we do how many are in the city.
I think the part that I scanned through quickly, I think that that's the important part. How many are within the city? And what is our goal on where they are and how many we should add? And that we can find out going through some other cities and talking. And you and I did visit one city. But I think what we need to do is to have that meeting that you brought up before our next P and Z. And let us really get down and talk about that because that's an issue we have to face quickly.
Yeah, well, we definitely need to consider that. I mean, the whole reason we set the moratorium in place was because we had some billboards that jumped up on it, basically, in the process. We have several other sign issues within the city now that we do need to take an active role immediately in doing, in working on the sign ordinances as a whole across the board as a commission so that we can get all of that moving in the right direction as soon as possible. We've unfortunately had people come and go in the commission that we've been shorthanded. But now it's going to be up to us to see that we get these things moving. So I don't know if, if there's somebody who wants to be a bean counter and go count the billboards. We could certainly use that.
Yeah, I would ask, Angie, I don't know if you know this. If you don't, maybe Mr. Hollowell or Mrs. Morris know. Has our moratorium expired that the City Council has granted?
So you, okay, so from what I've...
I can answer that question?
Okay.
It has not. The City Council agreed to extend the moratorium for a period of sixty days with a continuation of thirty days just automatically.
So what's the current end? The current end date that, do you know?
I don't know the end date of it. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. But I think you're fine. Just, we're kind of waiting for you to all meet and bring something to council that would lift that moratorium. So just give us some, some ideas and some rules.
I guess I was under the impression that, that our legal counsel was going to draft something based on what we said then and said about us.
I'm not sure exactly what happened to legal counsel altogether in regards to that. I don't know what his words were per se. I did not see that document. I just know the conversation we had that there was a limit. I mean, we've had a ton of stuff going on and everybody's had their hands full around the city. So it's been tough to hit one issue like that for us.
One thing I'd like to say is that I don't know how companies or persons advertise on billboards. I don't know what process they go through. But something I'd like you to think about and consider is the content of what's put on. Obviously, since we saw that incident and I think it was...
That's what initiated the moratorium.
Right, it's what initiated the moratorium. But also, we have, we have a billboard advertisement that's right by Ford, Texas Ford. And it's for a different car dealership in a different city. And I think that that's something that when you look at writing your procedures, that, that I would appreciate me looking at.
Yeah, that is, that is one thing that we had the, I know that council is looking at that particular issue because there's a real thin line between freedom of speech, as you well know, and those issues. But we're trying to get a grip on that so that we can regulate some of that with what we do with billable ordinance.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, God.
Thank you.
Now, unless you remember something different, John, the last thing that I could find was from June. And that was for a sixty day. And then there was an amendment to allow for an additional thirty to sixty days.
Right, so we just kind of left it floating.
Right, yeah.
So did we accept the thirty on the second one or the sixty?
Thirty to sixty, so it could be either.
Well, we probably should have the City Council extended another at least thirty days at this coming upcoming meeting.
At least through the year.
Just to make sure we're covered. And hopefully we won't have to come back and ask for another extension.
Unless John can come up with something before...
Well, I would, I would...
Well, we, we come up with December, may have to, may have to go before council to decide whether it's legal or not. And so...
Was it June you're looking at?
Oh, February.
June, July, or July, August, September, October, so...
Do we need to make a recommendation to council that they extend it further?
Yeah, I think we do.
Well, unless you can come up with something before, well, yes.
Yes, because we won't be able to have an agreement for the City Council to approve by the next meeting, so yes.
Yes.
At the next City Council meeting, we'd ask them to, actually City Council, consider extending the moratorium for at least another thirty days.
I say sixty and then we're not hard to get it down to thirty.
Sixty, I mean, it's going to take us that long to meet and digest it.
Well, and we don't know how fast too that council can get back to some of the issues once we do. Because we, we won't be able to resolve it until the next P and Z.
I have to do it with you, Gary.
And at that point, they'll have to be able to give it to council at that point.
I don't, thirty days is...
Legal basis.
Sixty, well, sixty days. I believe sixty days.
Okay, that sounds prudent. Okay, and I think we discussed a workshop between when our next P and Z?
Yes, yeah, we'd like to keep it on a Tuesday night. That would be simple for me.
Did we want to try double up on that eleven twenty-six? Is that?
The D E C.
Right, but I mean, when we're done with them, we already have too much. It could be done.
Depends on what their June is like.
This is what you wrote.
Right.
The twenty-sixth?
That's completely uphill. The nineteenth is open.
Yeah, yeah, will that give everybody a chance to review? Well, let's see, we, we may have a new appointment in a week for the commission. So that would give time for a new commissioner to be on board at that particular time. So if two weeks, we would better to allow that to happen, we probably have to shoot for that.
You agree? I think you're right.
The nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Now, we're having another commissioner on board.
A question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
To have another commissioner on board, will need a council approval?
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's supposed to be before council, hopefully in the next council session.
Is that name already before the council's card? I know that.
There should be several names before that.
Okay, that's all right. So hopefully that will be out of your attendance, Mark.
Provided it's only a gym.
All right, and we're setting up a workshop, a P and Z workshop for the billboard ordinance on the nineteenth of this month.
That is correct.
Correct. You want to shoot at five thirty?
Same batch, what's that?
Is that what you?
Can we make it five forty-five?
Sir.
Well, we can make it at six if you would like.
It's like a carry.
We'll do six and you can buy dinner.
That comes to the new person that's on.
Oh, really? No, no, if there's a new, new person.
Yeah, it was a new, new person.
Okay.
So we're at five forty-five.
All right, so we're, you were obviously able to download the, was that mailbox or mail drop stuff? And you were David or no?
No.
Okay. I don't have very good success either. Okay, I had a little difficulty as well.
I did too.
Angie, can you send us a link to the stuff or just a packet to the P and Z members? And we will commit to going over it before the nineteenth?
Or just print some out or... And I, I had some other documentation from other company and some other entities as well that are related around city zoning. It's usually links to videos and things of that nature that kind of explains the process as well. I'll see that I get those out to you guys also on the process.
I think the more that we act, the better off we are, sir.
So if we've got the meeting set, I'm prepared to make a motion to...
We have information to review and hopefully we'll have another commissioner on board by that time.
By that time, okay.
Okay, anything else you want to do with that item or we've got done with it?
Takes care of that at this point.
All right then, there being...
We need to make, we need to make a motion to have a moratorium extended to council for sixty days.
All right, so who wants to make that motion? Mr. Gradley, Mr. Corby, Mr. Reiser?
I'll make, kind of make a motion to extend it to sixty days.
I second that. Moratorium.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor is to request the City Council to extend their moratorium by sixty days.
Sixty days, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. All right, so we, all we just need to do is set our workshop meeting then for November nineteenth, seven, seventeen forty-five. That's five forty-five this morning, here in this chamber.
Five forty-five?
Five forty-five.
In this chamber?
In this chamber.
Yes, sir.
All right, now is there anything else? Not to my knowledge. Okay.
No, sir.
All right, if there's nothing else, we will declare the, the pending zoning commission meeting closed at six fourteen. It's still the fifth of November, twenty nineteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You are dismissed.